Twenty first, twenty twenty-two. Last one of the year. And last, kind of special for me too, and Tim. Last, last for us too. So with that, we're going to jump right into. I'm going to, actually Stacy's going to come up here, but I'm going to have her. She's going to start with Holton Lake. And then she's going to, I'm going to let her jump right to number two because she's on twice. So Stacy, if you're ready. Yep, bring it. You want to bring it? Great.
Good morning.
Yeah. Tim, how are you?
Yeah, turn your mic on.
So we have, what I would like to do is provide the board with a PowerPoint that kind of goes through where we are in all three projects. With us, and so we have a number of resolutions for you to review and consider. And we also have bond counsel and financial advisor on the Zoom call to go through some of the aspects of the interim financing. So Roger Swets from Dickinson, right? And then Bobby Bezinski from Bezinski and Associates. I have worked with Roger and Bobby on a number of different projects. I don't want to say how many years I've been working with Bobby because I don't like to admit I'm that wolf. Or Bobby. But they have, I think they have more experience with lake level projects than any other in terms of the financing. And so I'm thrilled that you're considering their firms and their assistance with this interim financing. So if it is okay and we are set, I have a PowerPoint to go through. All right, so we can skip to the next one once you get it in. Play show mode. We can go to the next slide. All right, so we're going to talk about, so as you may know, Roscommon County has three lakes that are under the jurisdiction, their lake level of the county Board of Commissioners. Holton Lake, Higgins Lake, Lake St. Helen. And so we're going to talk about each one of these with regard to what's taking place under Part 307, the inland lake level law. Next slide, please. So Holton Lake has been the active one in the last year. And so as you are aware, we went through the process of establishing the assessment district boundaries for the lake level. We had a hearing in October, and then we needed to notice a few more people. And we had a follow-up hearing in December with the Roscommon County Circuit Court. Prior to the court hearings where a lake level special assessment district boundary was confirmed, that means who's in, who's out, not who's paying what, but who's in and who's out. We took a number of steps that many of the commissioners were present at, as well as your delegated authority, Ms. Valentino, with regard to public input. So all the statute requires is that we send a notice of the hearing of the court. But based on the direction of the board, we did much more than that. We had a call-in line, we had a website, we had a webinar. We went to, we had meetings with the township officials and assessors. We had individual meetings at each of the township halls to go through this. And because of that, I think, it is my opinion that the circuit court hearings itself with regard to this went very well. In fact, I think your judge was surprised that, I think he was prepared for a long and arduous process. But Jody spearheaded what I would call a very transparent process of going through that I know many of you took part in and making sure we got, I would say, dozens and dozens and dozens, actually more than a hundred property phone call, property owner phone calls, emails, attendance at meetings to make that process go as smoothly as possible. And so I am pleased to report that we do have a confirmed special assessment district boundary for Holton Lake. So as this board decided in the summer, now that we have that in place, we learned through the public comment, and I don't think it's a secret to anyone, even without the public comment, that there are concerns that the lake level is set correctly. It has been historically managed different than what the established lake level is. So this board decided in the summer that we should move forward after the boundaries were set with considering amendments to the lake level. And so that's the step that we're at now is considering amendments to the lake level. And I'll unpack that in a moment. After we go through that process, and that process will drive all the engineering that takes place and the permitting with regard to the actual project. Then, once we arrive, I won't say all agree because as many people you have in this county, there will be different opinions about what that should be. Then we will move forward to the permitting special assessment hearing as to what, we will know what a project will be. And then we will work on the assessment methodologies, et cetera, and then bidding and construction. So we are past the first step, but there are many more steps to go through. I'm not going to sugarcoat that at all. There are many more steps to go through. So in unpacking that a little bit, next slide, please. The first thing we need to do today is we need to have some interim financing to assist with collecting the information through a study to consider the amendments and move forward with the project. So the financing that we are proposing is $1.5 million. That should be more than enough to reimburse the county general fund for the costs that have been expended to date to get the boundary set. And then also go through the public opinion and data collection to put that lake level study together. And then what I would consider, not your ordinary type of engineering, you have, as you know, unique hydrology in this area with regard to your lakes, to put together the engineering to get us to a bid. And so this interim financing would be for about a three-year period and then would be paid off with the ultimate financing of the improvement project for the water control structure. And so one of the resolutions that we will be asking this board to pass, and that's why Mr. Bezinski and Mr. Swets are here today, is that interim financing. That is normal for any type of project like this. And that would be, all costs regarded to that interim financing would be payable by the special assessment district with the ultimate improvement project. The other part of Holton Lake that we hope to get started on today, initiate today, is approval for your delegated authority to negotiate and approve a proposal from Spicer Group to start the first process or the first steps in that study. And we'll unpack that a little bit in a minute. And so there'll be a proposal with regard to, the proposal isn't finalized. We need to have some meetings to figure out exactly how that works. And I'll unpack that in a minute. But we would like a resolution to allow your delegated authority to move forward. There are, you have all of these moving parts. And if we don't get started, we will never get finished. And so we need to, we need to get moving. And then, and then, once that study takes place, then will we be able to come back, present the study to the board with a recommendation of going to court to make changes, if any, to the lake level with regard to that. But there are, there are many things that happen. So that's kind of where we're going on Holton Lake. Now, I have done dozens and dozens and dozens of these lake level studies in conjunction with engineers across the state. Next slide, please. And this is, as you know, your hydrology is unusual for Holton Lake. And so we think public opinion as to what the parameters of a recommendation to the court should be is important. But I also think that there is going to require significant engineering to take place before we can ask the public what it wants. And let me explain that. You can go to the next slide, please. I don't want to put out a public opinion study or survey that lets people give an opinion as to what the lake level should be, that it would be from an engineering standpoint and mother nature's standpoint, completely impossible to get to. So that's like I told my daughter, no, you can't ask for, you can ask for Taylor Swift tickets for Christmas, but that's not going to happen. And so I, and that, but even thinking that might happen might lead her to believe something that's not possible, as an example. So I want to get to the point where this public opinion survey is within the realm of what is possible from an engineering standpoint. And so there is some engineering that is required to get the parameters of what that, what is possible that would lead to that public survey of what is possible. Here are your choices, what are you looking for? And so the initial study by Spicer Group would include the initial engineering, that base engineering that is required to kind of get general parameters, not very specific parameters, but general parameters of what that is. And then we would do the public opinion survey to see where the public opinion lies with regard to that. We also anticipate involving Eagle and the DNR in that because we don't want to also give something that it might be possible from an engineering standpoint, but completely impossible from a permitting standpoint. So we don't want to give any of the public the wrong impression as to what might be possible or not possible before we do the survey. So that's step one. After we get that information, we present it to you. Then we really do a deeper dig into the study itself as to what's possible, what are the different alternatives, what are the different costs to bring to you with a recommendation of a specific request of the circuit court to make any revision to the legal lake level. So to say, let's put it on all one study and all one cost, would be really hard to put Spicer Group in a position to, what's that magic number? Because we haven't narrowed it down. And so they're going to put in the proposal, engineering services for any of the broad spectrum of alternatives. And that doesn't make financial sense for this board. So we think having this study in a two-part progress makes the most sense. And that's what we're recommending. So that's kind of, kind of the steps that we anticipate following. Next slide, please. So when we do get to the part where there's a study that we propose with a specific recommendation to take to the court, there are a number of things that are required by statute that be included. And there's also a different list of things that the court has to consider. So this study must include all of those items for the court to adequately make a decision. And so we wanted to just give you a taste of what that looks like because that requires significant engineering information to provide the court with accurate information to enter a court order. So just getting you mentally prepared, that's why we're asking for the $1.5 million to get us through the bids, because it costs a lot of money to get it right. Hopefully, it comes in significantly less than that with all the costs involved. But we want to make sure we have that for the interim financing. Next slide, please. So to summarize, after we get the study done, then we would go to court. The judge would set a level or a range of levels. Where I think we're going to end up asking for a range of levels, depending on what the engineering study recommends. Then we would move forward with the hard project engineering for the improvement project. And what that improvement project, you know, I think you anticipated what repairs would look like in our world pre-Midland Dam break. And the permitting requires post-Midland Dam break are significantly different. So this is not a minor project on this water control structure. This is a significant project on this water control structure that will require, significant again, using that word instead of lots, lots of information from the engineers in order to get a permit. And so we're mentally preparing you for that as well. But you don't want to do this again. I don't want to do this again. So we're going to do everything we can do to get it right. After that, then there would be a bid letting. There would be a public hearing on the project costs and assessments, and then construction. But we anticipate along the way, much public input in the, in the, in the survey and webinars and websites and public meetings when it's necessary along each of these steps to get us where we need to go. And then again, all the costs that I'm talking about for Holton Lake would be paid for by the special assessment district. All costs incurred to date will be reimbursed by that borrowing again and paid for ultimately with the end project. So before I move forward to the other lakes, I'm not asking you to review the resolutions yet. But before I move forward to the other lakes, does the board have any questions about Holton Lake? Yes, sir?
Public input several times. Public input is obviously important. It's an integral part of the, as we move forward. So I'm looking forward to the public input, which will help us guide our decision-making. So thank you for mentioning this several times.
Yes, and I have to say that this board has, this is the most public input I've ever had on a lake level project. And I'm so impressed with this board's willingness, and not only willingness, eagerness are basically requiring us to have this much public input. And I think that's important. I've learned a lot through this process from the property owners and different interest groups, depending on where you are in the lake, different opinions. And so that's very necessary to come up with the best project possible. So thank you for the opportunity to do that. Any other questions or comments?
Things seem to be moving in the right direction. I was at the first meeting, but the first court hearing in the place was full. And I was just amazed at the second court hearing, there was only a handful of people. So those people that were at the first hearing apparently got all their questions answered, which was very gratifying to see that we have been transparent with this whole thing. I think the biggest thing is, is that we don't want Holton Lake to get into the same situation that they do have down in Sanford with the head come up. Then it's an emergency situation, and then you're scrambling. So we need to be proactive on this thing. We need to move this ahead, which as chairman, I'm going to recommend that we move motion number four in regards to Holton Lake's approval of the lake level study and the resolution for the special assessment district. Be put on ballot, or be put on our regular meeting today because we need to get this, keep this process moving, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Then I'll move forward to your other lakes. And so each of your lakes is unique, just like children. We, each one has its own personality, own hydrology and set of unique issues. And so we'll kind of go through those for you. The next one, next slide, please, is Lake St. Helen and Higgins Lake. As the board is aware, you have established lake levels for these. But also, we are unable to find any court documents that lay out and confirm boundaries for the special assessment district. So we were, the next resolutions have to deal with that and moving forward to get, go through the same process we went through with Holton Lake to get special assessment district boundaries, who's in and who's out, set for those before we can take, move forward in anything else. So our recommendation is to move that process forward with both. Next slide. In terms of that, you have three water control structures that you have jurisdiction over. The one that needs work the most quickly is Lake St. Helen. And so we are going to, what I would call fast-track that one in terms of our resources working for you. And so we, we recommend, again, you pass a resolution to let us move through the process of, of getting the special assessment district confirmed. Doing that, that lake is less complicated, I don't want to say easy. No lake is easy, less complicated than Holton and Higgins. So we think we can move more quickly, even with webinars, meetings, stakeholder group meetings, the same type of public participation. But we think we can move more quickly through that process. So we are hoping by summer, we can have a court hearing with regard to the lake level boundaries on Lake St. Helen. Then move forward with that and get your permit, you get your engineering permitting and move to construction for those much-needed improvements to the water control structure, Lake St. Helen. And so you have a resolution in front of you today to do that. Higgins Lake, similar process. And that one, we will take these same steps, but the, the court hearing will not be this summer. We will start working on that immediately because we recognize that that is important. But that one is going to take more time because it is more complicated determining the same methodology we are going to use for all lakes, who has deeded private access, legal access to the lake or not. And so that is going to take time to get it right. And so we are going to move forward with all three lakes at the same time. But some are going to get finished, ready, quicker than others due to the complications and, and the sophistication of the situation. So, but we do anticipate moving forward on all three in the next steps. So next slide, please. So for both Lake St. Helen and Higgins Lake, getting started on those boundaries, the resolutions which we have before you today include designating the county controller as the delegated authority that has worked beautifully so far in terms of moving forward with what I would call the administrative steps of getting all your ducks in a row from a legal and administrative standpoint for purposes of special assessing. And we appreciate getting the opportunity to work with Jody on these. I don't know if she always appreciates being the delegated authority, but we certainly enjoy and appreciate having her there. This would also include expending more than $10,000 for the lake level activities. This will cost more than $10,000. And that's a requirement that the county board approve that. And then authorize the delegated authority to work with legal counsel and the engineers to prepare those district boundary recommendations and move forward to file petitions in the circuit court for those. And so that's what, one resolution for each, one for Lake St. Helen, one for Higgins Lake to take those next steps. And so to summarize in the next slide, so four resolutions, one for the interim financing for Holton, one to negotiate the contract for the study for Holton, and then one each to start that special assessment district process for both Lake St. Helen and Higgins Lake. Easy peasy, right?
Easy peasy. Stacy, you're very, you're very organized and a little history as far as St. Helen is concerned because of that, that, and with Bill from Maintenance, he identified that there is a problem with Lake St. Helen. When I first got here, we recognized at that time that Lake St. Helen had a problem. We spent about $17,000, $18,000 to correct it. But that was only to get us by seven or eight years. Well, here we are, here we are 15 years later, and we're still looking at it. And so St. Helen's popped up again. So, yeah, when you look at three, you look at our three lake control structures, I rank them as Holton Lake, first, second, St. Helen's second, Higgins Lake third. So in far as, far as actual construction and maintenance.
Yeah, the one, the one extra complication with Higgins Lake that I want to remind you of is we have another county involved in that. And so after we get the resolutions here today, we're going to have to go pay them a surprise visit. Hi, we also need you to pass some resolutions, even though I think it's only DNR land and their county involved, we still need their resolutions to allow for that. I anticipate them saying, thank you, Ms. Valentino. We'd love you to act as the sole delegated authority for both counties. But we do need to go through that process as well before we can initiate it.
Well, Higgins Lake has always got something going on.
I'm not even going to respond, yes.
That's right, I agree. I won't go there either, all right?
Step we can to include transparency on the process. We learned a lot through the Holton Lake process from the property owners. And we look forward to the opportunity to continue working with you.
Okay, I'm taking it, or as far as public comment, I'm going to allow the treasurer, I'm guessing that this is in regards to what the treasurer has to do. Am I correct with the money, right? I will, I will allow that.
Okay, the question is, when will the first time it will be on the tax bill? Not for a while. And that's a legal and engineering term. So this will not be assessed this year or next year because this is just an interim financing that will be paid off for the next time. So if I had to guess, which I, I kick my clients when they guess in front of everybody because then they think they're held to it, at least three years from now. For Holton Lake, Lake, and Higgins Lake maybe even longer than that? For Lake St. Helen? Probably not a year from now, most likely two years from now. That one's going to be quicker because of the less complexity. Correct. And so what I would anticipate is there will, after the boundaries are confirmed, there will be interim borrowings for all three lakes. And then those interim borrowings will be paid off with the bond for each of those. And then it will be collected annually only over a period of years. And that period of years is going to be dependent on the total project. You're welcome. Great question. And Bobby Bezinski and Roger Swets are on the call. And I'm sure they will make their selves available to answer. I am not bond counsel, and I love not being bond counsel.
Okay. At the end of your, you went through that very well, and I understood it very well. Any commissioners have any other questions for Stacy? Jim, yes, sir?
What we do here today is truly historic and is going to resonate for the next 100 years. I mean, as long, as long as everybody's in this room, and 100 years from now, this will still be an important part of what we do. Thank you.
Okay, I don't think the board has any more questions. We understand why you've got item two, three, four, and five on, and why we're moving ahead on this thing. So as a step completed, I'm open. We turn the page and go to the next one, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Would the board like your consultant team to stay for the rest of this meeting or the next meeting?
I don't need to, I think it'd be fine. All right?
Huh? Yeah, that's, I mean.
That's, that's what I figured, yes. Yep, that's our controller.
Thank you very much.
She's doing her job, thank you, Jim.
Thank you for your service. Oh.
You make sure you tell Mr. Hanson I said hi. Okay, thank you. Yep, Merry Christmas.
Mr. Hanson was elevated to president of. Oh.
All right. Good deal.
Mr. Hanson will still make guest appearance.
Okay. All right. Good. All right. Item three, Roscommon County Food Pantry. Chris and Kim Ashcroft, you want to come up? If everybody else wants to come up, we can get more chairs around, or we can just leave it at the two. I don't know, we can find some chairs here, I think. Or we can have, how about you take the chairs right here in front, okay? Okay, Chris?
Chris Ashcraft.
I'll have you.
Director, Roscommon County Food Pantry.
I'll have you take off on this thing and introduce your whole team right here and go right into it, all right?
This is our grant writer, Kim Ashcraft, our board president, Tony Tarrant, lead volunteer, Mary Major Hill, lead volunteer, Rose Frederick, and super volunteer Rita Benseyak. We were told it was a photo opportunity, so they wanted, they want to be part of it.
Did you talk to Commissioner Milburn? Hold up.
How did you hear that?
Oh, okay, yeah. I would have swore it was Commissioner Milburn you talked to.
I do appreciate you inviting me here to speak to you. I've never asked to come here and speak to you. As you probably are well aware, Jody said she would print out everything that I gave her last week. We are extremely busy at the food pantry. Busier than you'll ever imagine. I can tell the people who don't know, in 2021, our two smallest months of visits were April and May, and they were basically in the 120, 180 range. The last four months of this year, we've had over 400 families visit the food pantry. Sadly, they can only visit once a month. We don't have the resources, we don't have the food to give people food every time they walk through our door. It's, it's a, this is stipulation that we have to stay with. And we have people who call crying, saying, I need food. And do make exceptions, most of my volunteers do not take food. And they have a monthly box that we gladly give up to families that we've gotten to know. I've been there since 2020 now. Some of you know Linda Hogaboom was a neighbor, a close friend, and even a surrogate mother to me. And she's who brought me on. And it's been a blessing to be a part of the food pantry. I am 61, retired, and totally committed to the food pantry. I wake up in the morning, it's food pantry. I go to bed every night, it's food pantry. Anything needs to be done, it gets done. Luckily, my background at the age of 35, I went back to school and got a business management degree. So I do know how to run a business. I'd like to think that I'm running the food pantry very well. It seems to be very organized, which is. It seems to be very organized, which is by volunteers. We're very proud of it. But a lot of people don't know, and it's a very common question, how much do you get paid? We're 100% volunteer. And we will stay that way unless something major changes. They're the most dedicated people I've ever met. Because they're not there earning a salary. They're earning the satisfaction of supporting our community with food. I like to tell everybody, every individual that comes through our door has a story. Every volunteer that volunteers inside the pantry has a story. And we're very committed. And I was born in a big city. I've worked big cities. I love small towns. I grew up in Luddington, Michigan, pretty much. I've been here five years. I love this community. It's some of the best people I've ever met. The agencies in this area, I'm part of the collaborative. It's amazing. It's, everybody works together. Carrie Benchley from United Way, Suzanne Luck from the foundation. They're amazing people and they do amazing things for the community also. But I do my part by doing my best to give people food. My biggest problem is my supplier is running out of food. It used to be 75 USDA-priced items on their menu. Two weeks, two weeks ago, it was three items. This week it's five items. They used to have 10 pages of food that you could buy. Majority of the food on their menu now, which is only four pages long, is called purchase price. I can get 12 jars of peanut butter for $23. It's $191 a jar. Walmart's cheaper. And this is my supplier. This is who I got a contract with. This is Feeding America. That is my supplier. It's. I don't want to say it's turning ugly, but it's, it's fearful that, you know, businesses have to recover. Manufacturers have to recover. I work for manufacturers. I understand it. I don't like making this comment a lot, but I do know that in business, when in crisis, raise your prices. And I'm seeing that from my supplier who's got the best prices in the state. They're there for the sole purpose of giving. Food Bank of Eastern Michigan covers 22 counties and over 60 pantries. So they are providing food for a lot of counties, a lot of individuals. And without Feeding America and the programs that they provide, you know, we're very rural and, you know, it's this way it is. And we're just doing the best we can. I, I'm proud of the job that we do. I'm proud that we're able to support our, our community. The two hardest groups to get into my door are seniors and veterans. And we know the seniors who made $2 and something cents 50 years ago are living on next to nothing. There's pride, there's stigmas. You won't hear me say help. I will say support. Once I get them in the door, good chance I can get them back in the door. And all we give them is three to five days worth of food. One trip to the store, eliminate it, helps pay their utilities, their medical bills, medication for their kiddos. So what we do is very important and I'm proud to say that I'm running a very good pantry. It was. It was $80,000. Forty of it was for a brand new van. The van we have, and we're still waiting on our brand new van from Ford Motor Company. The van we have. God bless Linda Hogaboom. She refused to get in it. And I have put over $3,000 of repairs into it. It had a broken driver's window, which was a safety issue. Wheel bearings went out and then the power steering went wrong. And I had to put the money into it. We got a storage container. We're getting a heating and cooling unit into our shop, which is very vital, especially with the pandemic and COVID. All we asked for were non-food essentials that help improve our pantry. We said at our dining room table with Linda, night after night, before this was done, we're like, you have to ask for money for food. She says, I can't. It's just not me. She was in the Salvation Army for 30 years. She helped our community her entire life. She said, I cannot ask for money for food. We have donors that give us money. And we do have private donors and we do get grants. But because our numbers have gone from May 182 to last month was 471 families. I can see that we're going to hit 500. I can tell you right now, before it's over, we will hit 600 families a month. It just, the projection is there. Decline has been above the prior month for a year and a half now. And we provide a service and it, people know about it and they are taking advantage of the service. But we did not ask for money for food.
All right, well, the way this whole process worked, our controller was contacted and found out that there was a need. And God bless her, she brought it to us and we were able to address that today. And there is a real need. There is a little bit of limited money left over in our ARP money that we were able to identify. So we're in a process. This is, I feel, I'm not going to say this is an emergency because I don't want to say. I understand what you're talking about, but there is a need.
There's a need.
And we need to, I think as commissioners, we'd like to step up with $5,000 for the food pantry. We need to do a motion today on that and this chairman and with the blessing of the other board members, I think we can move that ahead. So I did want to bring you people in, have you communicate to us what's going on. Because until Jody brought this up, we knew there was a food pantry, at least I did. You know, and I've already, I've, I've talked to Tony a couple of times now already, but I'm from the St. Helen area and I'd like to see you get back there. I understand what you're, and you're working on it and that's okay with me, okay? Whatever you're doing. So if you need some help as far as getting help around, I can help you with that. And there's a great served organization over there that we can get behind to help you out. But I realize it's got something to do with logistics and it's got something to do with refrigeration and so forth. But that's where you guys come in. I don't do that. You do that.
So. I have as many coolers as I can put in. We're a very small shop in what most people know as Pinky's Plaza. We call it the Save-A-Lot Plaza. We're limited on space. I don't waste a single inch of space in there. The front room is to get food to our visitors, our guests. And our back room is limited as is. I keep it as well stocked as I can. I can tell you right now, I've got two pallets that are completely empty. And it used to never be that way. But when more, when, when the need gets bigger and more people come through our door, I have to figure out a way to spend money wisely, stay within my budget, and help every family that comes in our door.
Oh. With that, Chris, our controller who doggone, probably reads my mind more than my wife does. But anyway, she's, she's got me a motion here for number 11, which we will authorize and put into our agenda and vote on that in regards to the $5,000 for the American Rescue Plan funds, which are going to the Roscommon County pantry for the purpose of attending additional food stores for distribution.
We appreciate that.
Put that on today. So with that, any commissioners have anything that they'd like to ask at this time?
You and your team are God's messengers, servants of, your humanitarian servants. The highest honor you can acquire to. So thank you so much for being here.
And thank you all for, thank all for everything you do. I know I've, I knew about the food bank. I've learned more today. Over the last week, I've learned quite a bit. So I think it's a need and I think we're happy to fill it and we're happy to have those, those funds available yet that we can get to you, okay?
We've had a lot of agency support behind us. I will say, anyone who would like to visit the food pantry, Tuesday is the only day that we're officially closed during the week. I was there eight hours yesterday. We were passing out Christmas baskets to the community, which was a gift. It wasn't part of their monthly allotment of food. But um, I know from our conversation with Jody, she was blown away by it. I run a very tight ship and even though people are not paying for the food that they're receiving, when they walk in the door, it's like no other place you go to. You still look at your surroundings, you see what it looks like and you ask yourself, do I want to shop here? Do I want to be here? And our pantry looks good. It'll always look good. And we take pride in supporting our community.
Okay, so if you'd like to stick around, I will make a chairman decision here, but we will probably stick your, we will stick your motion in as under number five on the regular things so you don't have to be here for the whole meeting, all right?
Bob, I really don't want to say this, but we open at 10 o'clock and I'm normally there.
Okay.
But I'm here as long as you need me.
Well, I need, I need to finish up a couple of little things right here and we'll go right into a regular meeting. Might take 15, 20 minutes after 10, all right?
I've got good people at the pantry right now.
I won't wait till the end. I'll address this as fast as I can, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Item four, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board Appointment. Brenda Bachelor. She's going to be real fast and we'll keep this moving along, won't we?
Yes, we have Brenda Bachelor from the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. We have Wendy DeRocher with us this morning. Wendy's attended a couple of meetings. She's a resident of Roscommon Township and has interest in joining our authority. In addition to Wendy, Michael Bergs is also here. You're aware of Mike. I've seen him sneaking in earlier. There he is back there. Mike is up for reappointment to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority this morning, both serving three-year terms.
Okay, good. Wendy, welcome aboard. I know that committee has been very active, so we're welcome, glad to have you on it, okay? We'll, we'll take care of the formalities today, all right? Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Brenda. All right. Fiscal year 22. Final budget adjustments, which we do every year at this particular time. Jody Valentino.
Okay, so I am going to hand out to you what those totals ended up with. Just for the, more for the audience than the Board of Commissioners. Final budget adjustments at the end of the year, budget adjustments do not mean that a department is over or under its allotted amount. It simply means that line-by-line items need to be transferred so that the totality of each line is not under, I'm sorry, over budget. So this year, we do this in July, if I carry this type of thing. So this year, General Fund has a total of $691,565.65 that will need to be approved for final budget adjustment. This includes $130,905 to offset the juvenile detention losses. That is, that was a non-budgeted. The other one that was a non-budgeted is roughly $117,000 in funds for the Holton Lake Level Control Structure SAD project. And if you listen to Stacy, that's part of what will be included in that 1.5 in terms of reimbursement. Additionally, there's transfers to the law library of roughly $20,000 more than budgeted for licenses and usages with all the changeovers that we have had recently. We had a few departments that were over budget. However, it was either due to a unfunded mandate, i.e., maybe we had to put a new firewall in or something of that nature or a change in employee department funding. For instance, we had an employee that was originally budgeted to be out of family court, but then it changed to probate court based on some of the reimbursables that we have. So one was under, one was over, so they offset. And then the rest is all just regular line item transfers to make sure that there's no individual line item overages. Special funds, which is always the biggest one, is $3,528,764.8 sets. It is a large number, same as it was last year, and that is simply for a couple of different reasons. The biggest, largest is we have a budget now for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and a budget for EDC special funds. And we did not have that going into 2022, so we didn't have budgets for those. So the portions of those, and of course, that includes their ARP funding that was in there. Additionally, we do budget adjustments every year now for the road commission special millage. We have to take it out once Rebecca gets all the money in. We have to take that one point some odd million dollars and put it into the individual buckets, as I like to call it. So that requires a budget adjustment approval as well. We also awarded all of the American Rescue Plan Act funding in 2022, which was not originally budgeted for because we weren't 100% sure we were going to actually get the money. So those are all in there. The only department that you would see under special funds that appears to be over budget is the road patrol. However, that is only by about $72,000 and we are awaiting reimbursement from the state for the training grant, which is $6,750. So I am asking you today to add into motions six and seven, if I did that correctly.
No, you didn't. It's not, I don't, it's motion, it's motion nine and 10. I was going to point that out to you.
Nine and 10.
Yep, nine and 10.
That will be then for the 2022 general fund budget adjustments of $691,565.65. And then for the 2022 special fund budget adjustments, a total of $3,528,764.8.
For the commissioners, that item nine and 10. Their, item nine would be the $691,500, $691,565.65 goes on that blank line. And motion 10 is $3,528,764.8, which goes on the blank line for number 10. Okay? All right. Sounds good. We're moving right along. We'll be back here at 10 o'clock sharp so we can keep things going there too. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Meeting, December 21st, 2022. Before we stand, I'm going to, as, as one of my last functions of my career, I'm going to lead us all in the pledge. So if everybody please stand, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I've started a lot of meetings in my day, but it's always the favorite part of the meeting is to start with the pledge of allegiance. So thank you very much. Okay, item, Michelle and Jeanette. Or maybe Jeanette and Michelle. I don't know which one it's going to be, but could we have a roll call, please?
Russo. Melvin. Snyder. Milburn.
Here.
Buckenthaler.
Here.
Hey, thank you. All right, item number four, approval of the agenda. And before we do that, there's a few adjustments that I'd like to make and bring to the board's attention. Under number five, after motion number one in regards to co-persons of the year, I'd like to add that we will go right into motion number 11 due to time constraints and that's the only adjustment at this point.
With your adjustments, Mr. Chairman. Go move.
Okay, motion was made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the agenda with the following adjustments made. Any further discussion, any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Melvin. Oh, Milburn.
Here, yes.
Buckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
We're professionals.
Okay, we will move to item number five. Awarding of the 2022 Co-Persons of the Year Award. Jo Jean Thompson and Rebecca Younger. But before you come up, we're going to do the formality first, so I'm asking for a motion in a second to motion number one.
So move as your chair.
Motion is made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Buckenthaler. Awarded 20. Award the two thousand twenty-two co-persons of the year award to Jo Jean Thompson and Rebecca Younger. Roll call, please. We're not going to discuss it, we're just going right to roll call.
Oh, the resolution read.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Why we have a clerk?
Alright, I'm doing this part, I'm not being that evil to Jeanette today, so. Move to adopt Resolution number two zero two-two dash one two dash zero one and Resolution two zero two-two dash one two dash zero two, naming Jo Jean Thompson and Rebecca Younger as two thousand twenty-two co-persons of the year. Resolution number two zero two-two dash one two dash zero one, resolution of tribute for Jo Jean Thompson, Roscommon County Co-Person of the Year two thousand twenty-two. Whereas, Jo Jean Thompson of Holton Lake has been a resident of Roscommon County for thirty-one years, choosing to raise her family and practice her faith in the Holton Lake area. And whereas, Jo Jean Thompson has dedicated innumerable hours and years of her residency volunteering within our communities and providing support to numerous nonprofit services and is passionate in her support of combating social issues such as substance abuse, youth early intervention, and homelessness. And whereas, she has served as board member and chairperson for countless programs such as the Lions Club, Roscommon County Ministerial and Nonprofit Coalition, Roscommon County and Ogma County Drug Free Coalition, Crawford Roscommon Suicide Prevention Coalition, and Roscommon County American Rescue Plan Committee. And whereas, Jo Jean Thompson has participated and continues to participate in the Michigan State Police Angel Program, Michigan State Police Community Crisis Management Team, Holton Lake Community Schools After School Kids Club, and works full-time with Up North Prevention to promote and instruct in the prevention of all substance abuse disorders. And whereas, her desire to improve social economics within Roscommon County drove her to found both the Artisia Youth Park and Community Center, as well as the Oasis of Hope House for Homeless Families and Individuals. And whereas, Jo Jean's desire to improve her community, coupled with her can-do attitude and outstanding work ethic, have created a lasting impact on Roscommon County and provided opportunities for those less fortunate, makes her a noteworthy resident of the county. Now therefore be it resolved that Jo Jean Thompson of Roscommon County, Michigan, be honored, bestowed, and awarded the Roscommon County Co-Person of the Year Award for two thousand twenty-two. Resolution number two zero two-two dash one two dash zero two, resolution of tribute for Rebecca Younger, Roscommon County Co-Person of the Year two thousand twenty-two. Whereas Rebecca Younger and her family chose to relocate to Holton Lake in two thousand eleven, purchasing the Crest Resort to create a family-friendly business that would allow for community involvement and participation. And whereas, upon relocating to the area, Rebecca quickly became entrenched in the community and county, becoming an active member of the Holton Lake Rotary Club and earning recognition as a Paul Harris Fellow for her contributions to Rotary. And whereas, Rebecca chose to utilize her higher education in child development and counseling to volunteer as a victim's advocate for the Roscommon County Sheriff's Office Victim Services Unit, where her expertise, knowledge, and empathy were quickly utilized to assist with interviewing children that were disclosing abuse. And whereas, her fifteen years of experience as a child forensic interviewer, coupled with her tenacity and passion for assisting children within our county, quickly led to a vision of creating a Children's Assessment Center to serve suspected victims of child abuse. And whereas, Rebecca Younger utilizing her acumen, integrity, and entrepreneurial spirit worked with local law enforcement to create her vision, founding the Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center in October two thousand fourteen. And whereas, the Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center, under the direction of Rebecca Younger, now provides child forensic interviews, advocacy, medical, and mental health services to children and families of six counties, ensuring the reduction in trauma for children abused and/or neglected. And whereas, the same characteristics and traits displayed by Rebecca Younger in creating, growing, and sustaining the Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center, community orientation, intelligence, empathy, and courage are core to those deserving of the title Person of the Year. Now therefore be it resolved that Rebecca Younger of Roscommon County, Michigan, be honored, bestowed, and awarded the Roscommon County Co-Person of the Year Award for two thousand twenty-two.
Hey, there's a motion and a second on the floor already. I'd just like to add, under comment is in regards to Becky Younger, she also said on Roscommon County American Rescue Plan Committee Two. And I'm sure in Jo Jean's case and in Becky's, there's some organizations that probably got missed in this resolution because you guys do a lot. I appreciate both you ladies, everything you've done for the community and I couldn't ask for two more perfect people to be co-persons of the year to share together. Two great, great people, thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Commissioner, or Milburn? That was just a thumbs up, huh?
Good to go, Mr. Chair.
Okay, you're good to go, okay, with that, we will go to a roll call, please.
Snyder.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. And I'm going to go back to you two in a little bit, okay? Because I want to move things along to motion number eleven regards to the food pantry, okay? So with that, when you get it here. I got it right there. Okay. Motion number eleven, keep us in our, on our agenda as regards to the go ahead, Michelle and Reed, Michelle or Jeanette, Reed number eleven, please.
Move to allocate five thousand dollars of remaining American Rescue Plan funds to the Roscommon County Food Pantry for the purpose of obtaining additional food stores for distribution.
Motion is made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Milburn to authorize five thousand dollars of the American Rescue Plan funds to Roscommon County Food Pantry. Any further discussion, many commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. Okay, now we will just kind of adjourn a little bit and get some pictures here because I know Mr. Milburn's chomping at the bit. So. We'll go with the food pantry first. Go put your sport coats on, okay? Ease. Okay, Chris, where do you want us? Chris, you take front with that, please.
Okay.
Mark over here. Someone said that one.
Thank you.
How are you doing?
Good, how much so? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hey, O G and Becky, would you like to come up, please? Put you together, come on, both are now.
Co-person of the year.
Co-person of the year. Part of all this. Deportion. I. Seven people. That is. Even that might help. Hey, Ray, can I move? I got it there. Over. Right? So with that, no, those guys, Blackbird. O G, go ahead.
I'm listening, I don't know.
First of the year. You're certain, by right next to that. Alright. Okay, where did my thing go? There it is. Okay. Just a point of order to get us back, and we are on to item six, Class A Claims and Accounts, please.
Move to approve Class A bills in the amount of thirty-seven thousand two hundred and seven dollars and eighty-seven cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Russo to authorize payment of Class As an amount of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. Any, have any comments in regards to Class As from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Snyder.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carried, thank you. Claims and accounts, please, Jeanette.
Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Snyder, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler to okay claims and, claims and accounts in the amount of one hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy cents. Any comments or concerns from any commissioner at this time in regards to claims and accounts? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Hey. Thank you, item number seven, public comment, agenda items only, do we have any public comment at this time? Yes, sir. Are you going to take five minutes to?
I hadn't planned on speaking in the last meeting until Commissioner Melvin and Chairman Snyder spoke up and respectfully responding, or regretfully responding, and had some time to reflect on what they said. I want to set the record straight. As everyone should recall, Commissioner Melvin was removed from managing the dam back on May twenty-fourth because he left one of the gates down, which drained Higgins well below the legal summer level. That was the very day we filed a lawsuit against him for doing so, and his illegal actions are currently pending in court. Chairman Snyder did the right thing by removing him. In the last meeting, Commissioner Melvin tried to convince this board to lower the gates on Higgins when it was already illegally two inches below the maximum winter drawdown. Chairman Snyder rejected that request also, another good decision. Commissioner Melvin mismanaged the dam, was removed from doing so, and now he's telling everybody how to manage it again. It's unbelievable. Commissioner Melvin said that it appears that there's a radical change in the operation of the dam. Leaving the gates closed wasn't a rational, radical change. It was a correct reaction to the unprecedented low illegal levels we are currently experiencing due to his actions. Commissioner Melvin will answer soon for his illegal actions and keeping the dam open until May twenty-fourth last summer. Commissioners aren't immune from civil liability for illegal actions they take. Mr. Snyder then made some comments I'm going to address in a, in a minute. And then Commissioner Russo asked Commissioner Melvin what he wanted. Commissioner Melvin said if the gates were adjusted one inch over winter level, you would not drain any more water out, but you would adjust the gates to a position where if it went above the winter level by one inch, water would go over the top of the gates. As usual, Commissioner Melvin only gives half the facts. What he failed to mention is that there's a four-point-seven-five-foot uncontrolled wide-open spillway in the middle of the dam. Perhaps the law of physics do not exist in Commissioner Melvin's mind because even with the gates fully closed, billions of gallons are leaving Higgins. It's like believing that closing all the windows in your home are going to keep out the cold if you leave the front door wide open. Commissioner Melvin recognizes that the water flows over the gates in the winter, but fails to recognize that water also flows over the gate, top of the gates in the summer. The top of the gates, when fully closed, are at the legal level, yet he opens them when they go a quarter inch above the legal level until they drop below the legal level. Commissioner Melvin's concerns, concern that the summer level will be exceeded in the early summer is a short-term problem, if it happens at all, and it hasn't happened for three years. When the summer level is exceeded, the water simply flows over the top of the gates, just like it flows over the top in the winter. Problem solved. The winter maximum drawdown is different because it isn't a legal obligation, but the summer legal level is. The problem is that maintaining a low winter level prevents the water levels from recharging, so the summer level can be reached. Except for the lake level issues, Commissioner Snyder's done a great job here in our community. You've chaired this board for over twelve years, and I thank you for your service. You may be frustrated with the leak, lake level situation, however, no one is more frustrated than I am. The time, the energy, the money I've spent trying to get you to do your job is also frustrating for me and thousands of others around Higgins as well. That's why I ran for commissioner, and that's why I won. All you would have had to do is follow the law and do what the statutes and dam permit require and provide, and provide by requesting a modification in the permit. Your frustration is of your own making. The low levels on Higgins affect thousands, but you don't seem to think it is, was very serious. You blame it on Mother Nature, but when you were given recommendations on a fix, you ignored them. From two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen, several presentations at several meetings, provided hundreds of petitions, and submitted several surveys regarding the low water levels, begging you to ask Eagle to modify the dam. You did nothing, and we were left with no option but to go to court, and three appeals court judges said you were wrong. Mr. Chairman, you said that no one would compromise. You never offered a compromise. We did. Look at the transcript I'm going to provide here, here in a minute. We were the only ones that wanted to compromise. Judge Bennett asked us in open court if we could get together and mediate, and you and your attorneys rejected it. The record is clear, we were willing to mediate compromise, but you weren't when we, when you thought you were winning. Now you've lost that case. When the cases return to the local court, as I believe it will be, we will be happy to sit down with everyone and discuss what should be done going forward. We will compromise, but it will be within the law. Thank you very much, and I have copies of all that information.
You know, Eric, it's interesting that you can make all the comments you want, but I make one comment and you get upset.
Ask Colin, go on, boss. Didn't have to throw it out there.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I am just as much right as you do, I think. Thank you. Alright. Thank you for your comments, sir. Any other public comment at this time, please? Regards to the agenda. Becky, come on up.
I just also want to kind of just thank all the commissioners for their support and Bob, for you as your last meeting. And yeah, when I started the center, you know, why, eight, nine years ago, it was with the commissioner's support that made that happen. You know, allowing us to use the space where that center is now continuing to grow and expand. And from where we were eight years ago to where we are now, could not have been done without the support of this county, of the commissioners, of the support we get from our law enforcement partners, prosecutors, and Child Protective Services. So I'm very honored to receive this award today and really feel like it is something that should be shared with the whole county. The recognition that I am receiving for starting the center is not mine alone, and I really feel like that should be just said and out there because it can't be one person to do it all, it takes a county. And I really appreciate the commissioners for allowing me to do that and partnering with us to open up that center and provide the services that we are doing now, so. I will miss you, Bob. I'll still be around, but I just wanted to say thank you.
Hey, thank you. Any other public comment at this time? I hear something out there, Andy? Nope? Okay, I'm hearing things. All right, item number eight, Administrator Controller Report.
Merry Christmas, Jonathan. Let's see. No change in our approach versus Roscommon County Treasurer Fox versus everybody in regards to the tax issues for foreclosed properties. Cho versus Roscommon County, I'm still in that position where the Supreme Court is accepting briefs from other entities, MAC, Drain Commissioners Association, other various solicitors. I'm sure Eagle has been very busy as well. Ostrigan versus Snyder and Roscommon VOC, Ostrigan versus Snyder et al., and Ostrigan versus Melvin has no change. Our opiate suit, the big one with all this state money that's coming is in a stall mode right now. Essentially, all of the participating local governments initially had signed on, had agreed to the payment portions of it. And then in the very last six days, Ottawa County decided that they changed their mind and challenged the settlement. I don't think they liked how much money they were getting is what I get the gist of. What they have asked for right now is that the court redirect all of the first jail settlement payments away from local governments and towards the state of Michigan for the state of Michigan to allocate versus the proposed allocation. Obviously, this is probably not going to happen. It's just tying things up in red tape. There is another settlement with some of the larger entities. Walmart, Target are now drawn in that we will see funding for as well. But if you wonder why that opiate money is not in our revenues under the jail for 2022, that's why. There is no legislative update for you because they are all home asleep getting ready for Christmas.
They're checked out.
Yeah, they're done for the year. Becky spoke. We are, Becky and I are working together. The Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center Board has chosen to move forward with your offer of occupancy for the building next door. Of course, nobody knows how much that's going to cost, what that looks like, how much space will be needed. So what we have come up with is crafting a lease agreement. And obviously, we have a nice template we've used over the years that we got from legal. And that will encompass only a one-year agreement, but that will give them the first option to purchase and or continue lease agreement without being pulled out from under the rug. So if they start redoing and such, that it will be there. So we should be able to have that done by the beginning of the new year, no problem. Open enrollment is complete. We had 100% participation from employees. We had to chase down less people this year than we did last year, so that's always a great thing. Essentially, how it works with open enrollment under the legalities is you have X amount of time, you get the link, you guys all went through the process. If you do not complete that, then you are not eligible under the IRS guidelines to participate in benefits if you so fail to. So we're really proactive in beating people up to make sure that that happens. If nothing else, if we have called you and emailed you five times in the week to remind you, you certainly cannot say it was any fault of human resources that you didn't complete that. I did Zoom the five county meeting in regards to the juvenile detention center. That was the day we had the big ice storm in the morning. My referee, Kalini and myself both attended. We were a little shocked by the course of how it went. They started off with an engineer who was giving us a building proposal and what we have put back out there is before you start involving an engineer and paying an engineer, we need to sit down as the five counties and determine what our needs and goals are from the center. Let's not pay somebody to do something until we actually know what it is that we want to do. So we will be redirecting that a little bit and hopefully we'll be able to all kind of submit a template so we can gather that information for us.
Did the other counties agree to that?
They have, yes. I sent my nice email suggesting that yesterday. It was really, it was just very interesting. It almost like had a pie in the sky type of feeling for referee Kalini and I. We didn't think that their feet were firmly grounded in what reality for a juvenile detention center is. Most of the counties participating were looking for short term, which puts us in a great position of having a lot of knowledge that they can benefit from considering we did have a juvenile detention center for 20 years and are well aware of the much higher costs. They were doing a lot of comparisons to, the engineers were doing a lot of comparisons to jails that they have helped set up. And that's not apples to apples. I'm not even sure it's apples to oranges, to be honest, apples to keep. So, so we'll move forward on that as well. Both Judge-elect Mary Beebe and Attorney Prosecutor Michael Edwards have been sworn in. Judge Beebe will be official January 1st and Prosecutor Edwards is, well, he's here right now, so he'll probably like to be recognized.
I'm going to get to you. I'm going to get to you.
He can introduce himself and you can find out who our new prosecutor is. There's obviously been many movements anticipated for the beginning of the year with those two specific elected official changes. There is work to coordinate the movement of employees. A is going to be, B is going to see, D is coming in. So we are working with the employees and the elected officials to make sure we're staying within those 2023 budgets because they're obviously adhering those as they. Drain Commissioner applicants can now be reviewed because I know you were waiting for him to officially be sworn in before you did that. So now they will review those and the appointment committee will do their job and let us know what happens. Soil erosion will actually be vacant on January 1, 2023. This is more for my two continuing and my commissioners a lot to be aware of. The Board of Commissioners does have an option to add as an additional job duty soil erosion back to Commissioner-elect Wolfson until such time that a new drain commissioner is appointed and offered the chance to become certified or the board at that time may choose to try to hire somebody else. But we do have to have somebody actually in position for that. We will also need to add the LEPT command position to the agenda for the organizational meeting along with the soil erosion. This is your emergency management board. Essentially, this position would have to be able to respond in the case of an emergency in county to the command center, be able to provide information. There are requirements that you must take. You must take certain ICS classes in order to be certified. I will let you know right now that Darlene, that will not be one you'll be able to do because if there's a mass casualty situation, you'll be busy. And Commissioner Russo, same with you. So that'll leave three others to do that. I will have urine budget predictions for you. Good, the bad, the ugly. Overall, not too bad considering, looks a lot like every other year in the last several years where we're sweeping through. Obviously, one of our bigger unknowns is where we will end with the childcare fund. We know that we're going to have that 130,000, 117,000 that were not predicted to fall out, but we started January 1 with a fund balance of $1,463,883. Budget prediction of final revenues coming in just a tad over what we had budgeted and expenditures coming in just a tad under what we had budgeted. This is our trend would give us a ending fund balance of $1,559,822,000. Based on our 2023 budget, that leaves us a fund balance percent of 15.3%. If we were to go to an 18% fund balance goal, we are still looking then for $275,302.48. But I am predicting that we will increase about $95,000. Again, if the childcare fund comes under budget, so if they need more, then those numbers will flip the other way. Couple more things for you. Chart of Accounts. We've been talking for three years that the state of Michigan made all these great changes to our chart of accounts that we utilize for our accounting. The day finally has come where we are making those changes in the actual systems. That should be complete maybe at four o'clock today based on the timeline that I've heard. Yeah. But what I will say is God bless Pat in IT. Not you, Andy, because you didn't stay. But Pat took on the role of overseeing the changes, working with BSNA for the actual download software updates programs for that. I will get to that information once this will finalize. I'll be able to print out for all the departments, all of the new charter accounts changes. Several of them will have new departments. Some are actually holding fun numbers. So it's going to be super fun and confusing for a little while. The good news is we are all done with accounts payable for this budget. So everything else will be effective for January 1. Yes, you're going to be confused too. And then I get to get with Terry and Michelle to make sure that what we had to change to for the state of Michigan actually matches up with what they use down on their end for the courts. Obviously, preparation of the budget adjustments, which I get to do after the last four runs. We did have an animal control, animal shelter meeting. Tim's last, Arlene's first unofficial. A couple of things that were not on that list or there were some maintenance needs that have come up. Bill is handling those as we speak and I'm just going to kind of make sure that DeeDee is really getting those things to Bill on a, as they happen, not as they become more of a problem type of basis. Today is the Spongy Math Survey Crew's last day. They were able to, with all four and a half of them, to survey three fourths of the county. Of course, there's no data yet on the findings. The very last thing I'm going to say, and I'm not going to save it for public comment because I want it in my report, is thank you to Bob and to Ken and to Tim. I don't always like the decisions you make. I don't always like how you make the decisions, but I really have enjoyed working with you. It's been fun over the last nine and a half years, especially with Bob, to see how we didn't think it all alike and somehow now we are able to be like, oh yeah, this is the information about needs or this is, you know, Jody's premeditating the things that I'm going to want at the meeting or information or data or budgets that I'm going to need. Ken has been, give or take, whatever you think about Commissioner Melvin and lake levels. Ken has been an advocate for our employees. He has been an advocate for social services within our community. He has definitely won the hearts of a lot of people. He's in lake levels, of course, but he hasn't been afraid to make decisions and make votes for that. Tim is our newbie to the board and we loved you instantly. You have had such a great way of being the middle person, the person that could keep, you know, everybody a little bit more sane. And so I'm sad that you didn't run again. I'm excited that Darlene's going to be here, but you'll be missed, all three of you. So thank you.
Oh, any comments in regards to Jody's report? Just like to say thank you for your report and thank you for your warm comments. Onto item nine, correspondence. Item A is Mary Beebe's resignation letter in regards to the prosecutor's position. Item B is Ken Melvin's letter, which was read into the record at the last meeting in regards to Higgins Lake control structure. Item C, Consumers Energy News Release. The MSU Extension, December 2022 Programs. And item E, Michigan Association County Legislative Update from 12/9. Any questions from any commission regards to correspondence at this time? Okay. Item 10, monthly department reports. We've got the Sheriff's Department with the November Activity and Village Reports. Any questions regards to Sheriff's Department reports? Okay, thank you. Item 11. Terry's here. I'm going to let her do the introductions, but we've got a new prosecutor. So I don't know how we want to do this, but you don't, Terry doesn't want to introduce you, well then Mike, I'll introduce you. Okay, Mike. Mike Edwards.
Yes.
Congratulations and go ahead.
Thank you, my name is Mike Edwards. For those who don't know me, I've grown up in Northern Michigan most of my entire life, been practicing law for about 26 years. But 80% of my practices for the past 10 years have been right here in Roscommon County. I represent and so I took this position in Department of Health and Human Services and Abuse and Neglect Places. Been on the defense contact for felonies and misdemeanors for a number of years. I am the JL for Judge Dernigan in his probate courtroom for the past five years. So I've had a lot of contact with the people here in Roscommon County. I can tell you my 26 years I have practiced in every single county in Northern Michigan from M55 North. I can say without hesitation, Roscommon County, the court, the staff, the county staff are the best people I've ever worked with. They're cordial, they're family-like, and I'm just very excited to be part of this family. So for your appointment and I plan on running after that. My wife teaches in Houghton Lake. She's part of the alternative school that they have there. She's in charge of GED. It was just awarded the outstanding GED Teacher of the Year in the State of Michigan. So we're looking forward to actually moving to Roscommon. We actually right now reside in Galer, so makes that one hour drive every day. I do it about three days a week, so we're looking forward to moving here where we're to call home. I don't foresee any huge changes in the prosecutor's office. We have relatively two new assistants. We're doing so, moving around some employees. And Julie is retiring, so we're shifting some people over, dealing with some people from the front of the court to come in. Jamie Grech is going with probation office. So this can be a lot of moving parts, but again, between Jody and the staff and Terry and things are going very, very smooth. I'm just very excited to be here. Any questions?
Who did you bring with you?
So I, so being in Galer, I had my private practice, this is Camille, my secretary for 15 years. So when I was contacted, asked if I was interested in applying for the position, frankly, the first question I asked was would there be room for my secretary? And when I found that Julie was retiring at the end of March, yeah, there's space available. So Camille was here today and she was with HR all morning getting ready to register and socialists to be part of the Roscommon family.
All right.
Thank you, Jody, for.
I just, and that would be one of my things. I mean, we, we in our offices have gotten to you just from injured defense and because they got to come see us if they want to get their money and that's the way it works and just some various things. And so when we did meet with you and you sat down and discussed things with Noel and Noel texted me because I was off that date that you wanted to be sure if you were going to take the position that your 15-year employee had a slot to come as well, you won us over, hands down. So welcome. We're super excited that you're here and you too.
Thank you very much. Look forward to work with everybody.
Oh, Mike, welcome. Congratulations to your new position because I know you've been here for a while, so you know the ropes and you know what's going on. And Tammy, welcome aboard. And we'll go from there. And in regards to Julie, I talked to her last night and she didn't have a firm date yet.
She has a firm.
But when she goes, when she goes, please let me know. Okay?
She was also telling me that she's got some vacation time she needs.
Okay, well, I didn't get into that with her, so. All right. Okay, thank you. Congratulations. Yep. Okay, item number 12. Any unfinished or new business, please, from any commissioner at this time? Okay, item 13, we're going to go right to motions and so I know Michelle is. Michelle always keeps us straight, so we were going to start with motion number two. Am I correct, Michelle and Jeanette?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Go to it.
All right. All right. Move to adopt resolution number 2022-12-03, Higgins Lake Lake Level Special Assessment District. Resolution number 2022-12-03, Higgins Lake Lake Level Special Assessment District, whereas Higgins Lake located in Garrish Township and Lion Township, Roscommon County, Michigan, and Beaver Creek Township, Crawford County, Michigan, has a normal lake level established by the Roscommon County Circuit Court. Under Part 307 of the Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act, Part 307, CMCL 324.30701. How do I say that? It suck. And whereas.
Good job.
Whereas Part 307's primary mechanism to fund infrastructure and activities to maintain Higgins Lakes, normal lake level is by special assessments using a lake level special assessment district established by the circuit court. Be generally, MCL 3.24.30714. And whereas. And whereas upon information and belief, Roscommon County is unaware that a lake level special assessment district exists to fund infrastructure and activities to maintain Higgins Lakes, Higgins Lakes, normal lake level, the two S's is difficult, sorry. And whereas, based on the facts above, the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners desires to establish and confirm the boundaries of a Higgins Lake Lake Level Special Assessment District. Now therefore be it resolved. One delegated authority, the Roscommon County Administrator Controller shall serve as the county's delegated authority for Higgins Lake under part three oh seven. C M C L three two four point three zero seven zero two subsection two. Number two, over ten thousand dollars expenditure. The Board of Commissioners approves annual expenditures of over ten thousand dollars for activities related to Higgins Lakes normal level, including but not limited to establishing and confirming a lake level special assessment district, including specifying its boundaries. N C L three two four point three zero seven two two subsection four. Number three, services file petition. Delegated authority may retain and utilize legal counsel and engineers to perform services related to preparing the boundaries of a recommended Higgins Lake Lake Level Special Assessment District under part three oh seven and any further services that are necessary, necessary related to maintaining the lake's normal lake level. Further, the Board of Commissioners specifically authorizes retained legal counsel to file a petition in the Roscommon County Circuit Court to take any action necessary to establish and confirm the boundaries of a lake level special assessment district for Higgins Lake. The M C L three two four point three zero seven zero seven subsection five, Roscommon County Circuit Court has continuing jurisdiction. Number four, Crawford County. Upon approval of this resolution, the delegated authority may direct retained legal counsel to assist the Crawford County Board of Commissioners with passing any resolutions or other activities to confirm the actions authorized in this resolution. Number five, cost of activities. All costs associated with the activities authorized above, including retaining all necessary consultants, include legal counsel and engineers, shall be reimbursed by the Lake Level Special Assessment District to the extent permitted by part three oh seven.
Hey, thank you, Michelle. Do I have a second or I mean a motion in a second, please? Okay.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Russo, second by Commissioner Muckenthaler. Adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash zero three in regards to Higgins Lake, Lake Level Special Assessment District. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Schneider.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Thank you. All right. Motion number three, please.
Move to adopt resolution number two zero two two dash one two dash zero four, Lake Saint Helen Lake Level Special Assessment District. Resolution number two zero two two dash one two dash zero four, Lake Collins, Lake Saint Helen, Lake Level Special Assessment District. Whereas Lake Saint Helen located in Higgins Township and Richfield Township, Roscommon County, Michigan, has a normal lake level established by the Roscommon County Circuit Court under part three oh seven of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. The M C L three two four point three zero seven zero one. And whereas part three oh seven's primary mechanism to fund infrastructure and activities to maintain Lake Saint Helen's normal lake level is by special assessments using a lake level special assessment district established by the circuit court, see generally, M C L three two four point three zero seven one four. And whereas upon information and belief, Roscommon County is unaware that a lake level special assessment district exists to fund infrastructure and activities to maintain Lake Saint Helen's normal lake level. And whereas, based on the facts above, the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners desire to establish and confirm the boundaries of a Lake Saint Helen Lake Level Special Assessment District. Now therefore be it resolved. Number one, delegated authority, the Roscommon County Administrator Controller shall serve as the county's delegated authority for Lake Saint Helen under part three oh seven. The M C L three two four point three zero seven zero two subsection two. Number two, over ten thousand dollars expenditure. The County Board of Commissioners approves annual expenditures of over ten thousand dollars for activities related to Lake Saint Helen's normal level, including but not limited to establishing and confirming a lake level special assessment district, including specifying its boundaries. M C L three two four point three zero seven two two subsection four. Number three, services file petition. The delegated authority may ta, may main, may retain and utilize legal counsel and engineers to perform services related to preparing the boundaries of a recommended Lake Saint Helen Lake Level Special Assessment District under part three oh seven and any further services that are necessary related to maintaining the lake's normal lake level. Further, the Board of Commissioners specifically authorizes retained legal counsel to find a petition, to file a petition in the Roscommon County Circuit Court to take any action necessary to establish and confirm the boundaries of a lake level special assessment district for Lake Saint Helen. The M C L three two four point three zero seven zero seven subsection five, Roscommon County Circuit Court has continuing jurisdiction. Number four, cost of activities. All costs associated with the activities, including retaining all necessary consultants, legal counsel and engineers to establish and confirm the boundaries of a Lake Saint Helen Lake Level Special Assessment District authorized above shall be reimbursed by the Lake Level Special Assessment District to the extent permitted by three oh seven.
I have a motion in a second for motion, um. Number three.
No move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that. Motion is made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Snyder. To adopt the resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash four in regards to Lake Saint Helen Lake Level Special Assessment District. Any further comments from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Okay, motion number four, please.
Move to adopt resolution number two zero two two dash one two dash zero five, Houghton Lake Approval of Lake Level Study. Resolution number two zero two two dash one two dash zero five, Houghton Lake Approval of Lake Level Study. Whereas on June eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners passed a resolu, passed resolution two two zero two two dash zero six dash zero one, which among other things authorized an engineering firm to prepare a study and perform related activities to determine whether to amend the normal level of Houghton Lake. And whereas the engineering firm Spicer Group, Inc., will prepare a proposal as discussed at this meeting for an initial process to study the lake level of Houghton Lake to investigate whether to amend the normal level of Houghton Lake as well as to engage stakeholder input. And whereas, the County Board of Commissioners directs Houghton Lake's delegated authority, the county controller, to execute the proposal and to begin activities to investigate the necessity for any amendment of the normal level of Houghton Lake in the Roscommon County Circuit Court. Now therefore be it resolved. One, authority, as delegated authority for Houghton Lake's lake level, the county controller may negotiate and execute the proposal with Spicer on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Once executed, Spicer shall begin work pursuant to the proposal. Two, cost of activities. All costs associated with the activities in the proposal above shall be reimbursed by a lake level special assessment district to the extent permitted by Michigan law. To the extent necessary, the delegated authority may annually expend more than ten thousand dollars under M C L three two four point three zero seven two two subsection four for activities related to the normal level of, including the above.
No motion in a second from motion, motion number four, please.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Russo to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash five, Houghton Lake Approval of the Lake Level Study. Uh, any further discussion from any commission in regards to motion four? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Motion five, please. Take a drink of water.
Move to adopt resolution number two zero two two dash one two dash zero six, Houghton Lake Special Assessment District Lake Level Project Progression and Finance. Resolution number two zero two two dash one two dash zero six, Houghton Lake Special Assessment District Lake Level Project Progression and Financing. Whereas pursuant to part three oh seven of Act four fifty-one, Public Acts of Michigan nineteen ninety-four, as amended, the Roscommon County Circuit Court at a session held on February twenty-fourth, nineteen eighty-two, established the normal lake level of Houghton Lake in the county of Roscommon to be one thousand one hundred thirty-eight point one feet. Provided however, that said level be lowered to a level of not less than one thousand one hundred thirty-seven point six feet from November one of each year until April fifteenth or ice, or ice out, whichever shall first occur. And two, at a session held on December eighth, two thousand twenty-two, established the boundaries of the Houghton Lake Lake Level Special Assessment District for the purpose of financing lake level improvements and activities necessary to establish and maintain the lake level of Houghton Lake. And whereas, the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners has appointed the Roscommon County Administrator Controller as the delegated authority within the meaning of part three oh seven to take such actions as are necessary to maintain the normal level of Houghton Lake. And whereas, it is necessary for the administrator as delegated authority to undertake a lake level project for the special assessment district in order to maintain the normal level of Houghton Lake. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the county of Roscommon as follows. One, the special assessment district shall be designated and hereafter referred to as the Houghton Lake Lake Level Special Assessment District. Two, the appointment of the administrator as the delegated authority within the meaning of part three oh seven and the actions of the administrator as delegated authority today are all ratified and confirmed. Three, as delegated authority, the administrator is authorized to undertake the design, acquisition and construction of a lake level project for Houghton Lake. Four, as delegated authority, the administrator may retain legal counsel to perform services related to maintaining the normal level of Houghton Lake and work necessary or desirable for the lake level project. Five, as delegated authority, the administrator is expressly authorized to retain an engineering firm to perform services related to maintaining Houghton Lake's normal level, including without limitation, all services necessary for the lake level project. Six, the Board of Commissioners authorizes the administrator to retain municipal finance council and a registered municipal advisor to assist the special assessment district in borrowing funds to pay the interim costs of the project incurred prior to the time long-term financing is obtained for the lake level project. Seven, all costs associated with the activities authorized above shall be reimbursed by a lake level special assessment to be leveled, levied by the special assessment district to the extent permitted by part three oh seven. Upon proper proceeding to approve and confirm a special assessment rule and/or bonds issued by the special assessment district to which the Board of Commissioners by a two-thirds vote of its members-elect will be asked to pledge the full faith and credit of the county of Roscommon at such time as the special assessment rule for the lake level project is approved. Eight, the chairperson of the board, the administrator, the county clerk, the county treasurer and any other official of the county or any one or more of them are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary or desirable for the issuance of the interim financing and to execute any documents or certificates necessary to complete the issuance of the interim financing. Nine, the special assessment district may proceed to acquire and construct the lake level project using available funds. At such time as the special assessment district issues the bonds for the long-term financing of the improvements, the expenditures for the lake level project shall be, shall be reimbursed out of the proceeds of the bonds. This resolution and expression of intent to seek reimbursement from future proceeds of the interim financing and the special assessment bonds is intended to satisfy the requirements of section one five zero of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six and amended and up. Ten, all resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as the same may be in conflict herewith are hereby rescinded.
Okay. A motion in a second on motion number five.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion was made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Milburn. Move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash six, Houghton Lake Special Assessment District Lake Level Project Progression and Financing. Any further discussion from any commissioner?
Maybe controversial, I'd say it's this, this historic legislation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Another councilor, commissioner? Roll call.
Schneider.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Adoption adopted.
Thank you.
Adopted.
Thank you. All right. Motion number six, please.
I don't know if I can handle this. It's so short.
Well, that's why, that's why you got to not, you got to not with you. You can share it.
All right, number six, move, move to approve the appointment of Wendy Durocher to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board for a three-year term beginning November first, twenty twenty-two through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Snyder, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler to approve the funding of Wendy Durocher to the Brownfield to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board for a three-year term beginning eleven one, twenty twenty-two through ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Any further comments in regards to motion number six, please, from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Motion adopted, resolution adopted.
Hey, congratulations, Wendy. Motion seven, please.
Uh, move to approve the reappointment of Michael B. Briggs as board member to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board for a three-year term beginning November first, twenty twenty-two through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
No move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Snyder to approve the reappointment of Michael Briggs to the board as a board member of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term beginning eleven one, twenty twenty-two through ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Any further comments in regards to motion number seven, many commissioner? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion eight.
Uh, motion eight, move to reallocate ninety thousand of the previously awarded A R P A funds to the Economic Development Streetscape and Dreams for Sales Program to the Economic Development General Operations.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Snyder, seconded by Commissioner Russo to reallocate ninety thousand dollars to the air, of the A R P funds to the Economic Development Streetscape and dreams for sale programs to the Economic Development General Operations. Any further comment from any commissioner at this time? Regards to motion eight. Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Time, please.
Move to approve the twenty twenty-two general fund budget adjustment for a total of six hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars and sixty-five cents.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Milber, Milburn to approve the twenty twenty-two general fund budget adjustment for a total of six hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars and sixty-five cents. Any further comments from any commissioner in regards to motion nine? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Schneider.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, motion number ten, please.
Move to approve the twenty twenty-two special fund budget adjustment for a total of three million five hundred twenty-eight thousand seventy-six dollars and forty-five cents.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight cents, excuse me.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Snyder, seconded by Commissioner Milburn to approve the twenty twenty-two special fund budget adjustments for a total of three million five hundred twenty-eight thousand seventy-six dollars and forty-eight cents. Any further comments in regards to motion number ten, please, many commissioner? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle and Jeanette. Appreciate that. Okay, item fourteen, commissioners' reports, committee reports, please.
Oh, I just had claims and accounts. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Milburn?
What did you report, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Uh, I had animal control and claims and accounts.
Okay. Um. Mr. Milburn and myself had health department last week at four o'clock. Um, they did have, they did have a, a nice Christmas party at Fred's last Friday. Uh, unfortunately, I was a little under the weather, so I wasn't able to attend that. And I did attend, uh, the investiture for, uh, Mary Beebe as eighty-second district court judge yesterday. And it was very nicely done, so. So I have. Item fifteen, public comment at this time, please. Again. I'll let him go first. I'll let him go first.
I was, I did in preparation for some other comments that I wanted to make, that you did last week, you made last week. I'm not going to do that. Instead, I'm going to hand deliver these to you so you know what I was planning on saying. And maybe you and I can handle this one-on-one rather than address it to the public and everyone here. I think enough's been said and done on the subject on the lake levels. And, uh, that's what I wanted to say.
On my behalf, I'd agree with you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anytime you want to get together, Bob, and talk about this, I'd like to find out why.
Okay. Well, I'll be unofficial by then. All right. Any other public comment at this time from anyone? Yes, sir. We'll go back to the gentleman back here. Come on up and identify yourself, please, and go ahead.
Mike Smolka. President of the Houghton Lake Lake Association, chairman of the Houghton Lake Conservation Foundation. Uh, as you know, Houghton Lake, the Houghton Lake Lake Association and the Houghton Lake Conservation Foundation have significant environmental and ecological concerns regarding the use of chemicals on Houghton Lake. Houghton Lake Lake Association and the Houghton Lake Conservation Foundation have never been in favor of the use of these chemicals. In the past two years, your representatives have approved eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If you follow this plant around, chase it around this lake. And twenty twenty, you were down to two hundred and nineteen acres of this plant, and in twenty twenty one, you, uh, went to eleven hundred and five. That's a big increase for chasing this plant around. In our last permit, you used, in your last permit, you used over three hundred and eight thousand pounds and over five thousand gallons of chemicals on the use of Houghton Lake. In a twenty-year chase of this plant, not only have you violated court orders for states set lake levels, but you continuously violate Michigan statutes under your improvement board for Houghton Lake. While managing the lake levels far above legal levels, indirect violation of the law, you have caused the taxpayers additional money and chemicals that have been added to this lake, causing harm, serious harm to human life, the ecosystem, the watershed, the plants and the animals. The Houghton Lake Lake Association and the Houghton Lake Conservation Foundation do not support the use of these toxic chemicals. Chemical substances presented an unreasonable risk to injury to human health, along with the health of the ecosystems of the lake and the surrounding watershed. I can give you, you, you went through my website, you, you know, one of your commissioners.
I've never been to your website.
Yeah, well, that's funny, that Dave Russo was mentioned, uh, he looked around the website.
It's another Dave Russo in the county, too.
Yeah, junior. Okay. We ask this board motion to stop all herbicide use on Houghton Lake and the Roscommon County and Roscommon County until a peer-reviewed scientific study demonstrating that the use of these chemicals can be shown on the ecological and potential short-term, long-term impacts that surround these applications. Thanks for your concern. Mike Smolka. Do you have any questions?
One comment, that's not a comment.
It's under, it's under your jurisdiction?
Nope.
It's a government agency?
Nope. It's an authority.
It's an authority.
Yep.
Motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So. Thank you.
Got a public comment at this time? We'll be here all day. Well, Tim, just sit there a minute.
I will. I want to go take that, I just want to thank the board, uh, you know, as fourteen years at the road commission, I just wanted to say how I thought that, uh, this county board historically has been both professional in its, uh, in its motions and, and movements over the year and, and the stability that was afforded by several of the members that have been here for a very long time. Wanted to thank them for their services, they go out the door, um, and wish the best of luck to the ones that are remaining and, and the new ones that are going to be sitting up here at the next meeting. And, uh, that's all I want to say is thank you very much.
Hey. Thanks, Tim. Yeah. I'm, Mary, I'm going to go to Michelle because she's just chomping at the bit here, so.
Chomping at the bit, I just wanted to give you a heads up that now that Prosecutor Edwards has been appointed, I have been in contact with him and Judge Journey, and, and we do have, um, we plan to do interviews on Wednesday, December twenty eighth. So.
Okay, that's the responsibility yourself, the prosecutor.
And the probate judge.
The probate judge, okay, thank you. Mary, go ahead, come on up.
I too just wanted to express my thanks. Um, you have been extremely supportive of the Roscommon County Commission on Aging. Um, you know, we went through a rough patch here in the last few months, we're through it, and I appreciate everything that you did to not only help me with, um, the interactions with the county, with, um, helping me to understand what I needed to do with a first-time millage request, the support of the board and the county staff, or the Roscommon County Commission on Aging, and myself have gone above and beyond, and I just wanted to be here today before you guys leave to say thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Yes, sir. When'd you come in?
Garris Township, I, 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 I know I ducked in late because I've been, uh, you know, busy running the township, but I wanted to come, uh, at the last minute, as it may be, to, to thank the board members that are the county commissioners that are going off the board for your service, for your dedication, and, uh, for your forthrightness. As an elected official, sometimes we face, uh, we face criticism from the, from the community that is either, I don't want to say uneducated, but sometimes they don't have, they don't have all the information. And I know that, that, that i- in the six years that I've been supervising Garris Township, I've come in and out of these meetings and, and I've always respected the, the county commissioners for the work that they do. Uh, we don't always agree with, uh, with the votes that are taken, but you know, sometimes, sometimes we have to recognize and, and say thank you to the, the gentleman that are going off the board, because th- these jobs are not easy. And, you know, uh, I remember, I wish I could remember the quote is by, uh, one of our former presidents about the man that steps forward into the arena and does the work, uh, for, for the community.
Eddie Roosevelt.
Pardon me?
Eddie Roosevelt.
There you go.
Eighteen ninety-eight.
There you go. Anyway, I, I just wanted to thank, to thank you two gentlemen for your work and, and for your dedication and for your service. And, uh, many times it's, it's, it's not fun sitting up there and, and hearing from the public, but I just want to say thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment at this time, please? Mr. Mukenthaler. Want to give you final time, you got, you got anything to say?
Uh, I, I guess I enjoyed it. You know, we've been thrown under the bus a lot. I don't regret it. Put it that way. And I liked Jody's comments. Trying to make things. Get rid of a little levity. That's it.
Hey, good, he didn't know I was going to do that. I'm going to take the final comment because I think I've earned that right. But anyway, it's been honor and a privilege to serve this county. I've lived in this county for forty-eight years. When I, uh, had the unfortunate circumstance of losing my job through a bankruptcy, um, I landed on my feet right here at the county, and I tell you what, I've enjoyed every minute of it. It's been fun. Um, it's been enjoyable. Um, I'm leaving with a lot of positives and not many negatives. Um, the employees here have been great. I feel one of the things that we promoted over, over our time here together is it's always been a we mentality, not about I. And I can say that about the employees, they've had just as much involved in this, and tell you what, as a commissioner without the employees, we don't do the work they do, they do a fine job here. Um, it's just been very gratifying to be here. Um, regards to the fund balance, um, I know it's at fifteen percent, we'd like to get it to be eighteen, but I'll tell you something, just a little advice or recommendation, you might want to get that fund balance a little higher if you can. You need to probably revisit the restoration millage again. Uh, we've been unsuccessful to get that through, but I think it's all needed for the county. You know, and the other thing is, when I came into office, I never had an agenda. I think I listened to people. Uh, maybe not as much as they wanted me to. I may not have agreed with some people, but I never had an agenda, and I'm going to tell you this, it was not I. Things don't get done unless you go we, because this board is five people. You have twenty percent of the vote. And that's why we have that, that's what we have, five people, is it can be three to two, it can be four to one, and it can be five to oh. Um, and if it's, it's a no vote that way, so be it, if it's a yes vote, that is, it's that way. But I've enjoyed my time here. But it's just time to go. So with that, I'm going to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Oh, we got one other thing.
I thought I was going to get out of here.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I think I can summarize, summarize your tour. You've, uh, you and Tim and, and have served the constituents of this county faithfully, with honor and with integrity, and I think those are three important words, faithful, integrity and honor. So with that, I'd like to present some questions to you guys. Tim, you've been the stabilizer for the board. So it's interesting what you have to say or not say. Can I get a photo? Imagine that.
Imagine that.
Bob? You know.
Let me get my coat on.
One thing about Bob, I, I don't think people realize how many hours he's. Bob's here almost every day. Bob serves as chairman of the district. Bob is on several other different boards, economic development, bands, a lot of times. So it was, uh, it was an honor and pleasure. I, you know, I would have never met these three guys, but. They had, it's been an honor and pleasure. And Ken, Ken is the veterans guy. Who beat you down with veterans issues. But he's, I'll tell you, he's passionate and he really truly cares. I've never seen a man on that board that works so hard on the veterans board, so we'll, we'll award this plaque to, to Ken when we see him. Again, gentlemen, it's been an honor, pleasure and a pleasure to work with you guys. Good day, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, it's so adjourned.
Okay. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One last time.
I have pizza coming, so.